Commissioner.
Good morning.
I understand this morning why we have a big celebration, is that true?
Well, it's a bad day for somebody.
It's a bad day.
You handle bad days one of two ways, you make the best of it or you have a bad day. So we'll make the best of it for her.
I think it's a good day. I was down in Linda Guzire's office this morning, and those of you that haven't had the chance to go down there, you need to, it is Candyland, and we are today celebrating a milestone for our beloved county treasurer, Linda Guzire. Before we get started, do you have any comments after this experience that you've had over the past number of years that you can pass on to some of us younger folks?
Stand up, stand up, stand up, come here.
I don't like my work here, so other than that, it's all good, I'm celebrating a lot of milestones. What's one more? And gee, this is pretty sneaky.
Actually, I don't know what you've got in your hand, because it wasn't me that asked for it. It brought you up here, though, thank you. Anyway, happy birthday to Linda, thank you very much. Very good, only other thing I have before we get, I'm sorry, you've got something else?
Chairman, Tanya is insisting that we sing for her.
Yeah, we need to sing.
So she will lead us?
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Linda, happy birthday to you.
Linda, just be glad there's not a sombrero involved.
Only other thing I've got before we get started is that the National Association of County Engineers are meeting this week over at Century Two, at Hyatt. Dave invited me over yesterday morning, they gave me a nice mug that says National Association of County Engineers, I wanted to give it to David and he can give it to one of his engineers.
Oh, okay.
If you can do that.
You did all the work for her. You were welcome yesterday.
Yep, and anyway, we want to make sure that we welcome those folks, they had, I was told yesterday morning, 35 different states were here, and it looked like Canada was here also, because they had a Canadian flag up on the stage, so I want to make sure that we extend a very warm welcome, because it's not often that we get to host one of the organizations that's nationwide, that's all part of our engineering department, so.
Well, the highlights will be tonight, we're going out to the zoo for the Nace Zoo League.
Okay. Well, I bet that's rocking, yeah.
It's gonna be rocking.
True.
Animals and engineers.
Animals and engineers.
You know how to tell the difference between, you know how to tell the difference between, the difference between an extroverted engineer and an introverted engineer, is the introvert is looking at his own shoes and the extrovert's looking at the other guy's shoes.
Did you use that yesterday in your speech?
I used it, they threw eggs at me. What do we have for now?
One thing mentioned, before you walk out the door, grab a cookie or a cupcake on behalf of Linda's honor, other than that, the only other agenda item we have is to talk about optimized deployment, and I think Dr. Gallagher is going to lead that with Alora, just some new 911 response tactics, and he'll give us the overview.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me, quite an honor to be able to come and speak to you guys, but even more so in a celebratory fashion about a project that has been going on for a long time, was very multidisciplinary, and has really done good things for our community. Also going to take a little bit of time towards the end to talk about some new thinking that we're having and some next steps that we're considering, to put those on your radar and kind of keep things moving forward, so, we'll jump right in here. So when I moved here, when I moved to the community in 2015, this was one of the first challenges that I was presented with, and this is data out of the fire department from the city of Wichita, and essentially what it shows is that over the preceding decade, the medical call volume had been on a steady climb, while the non-medical, traditional fire-related calls had been fairly flat. So it's quite an unsettling experience to come to a new community, take on a new job, and immediately be handed a problem that appears to be exclusively in your own wheelhouse that is providing real, real burden to fire services. And while this data came out of the city side, the understanding and expectation is that we were seeing an identical phenomenon in the county fire department as well. So something needed to be done. When we looked at the division in how these calls were breaking down, what we saw was that it was divided into three categories, non-medical alarms, which are your traditional fire-based work, that's quite appropriate, mid and high acuity medical calls, also very appropriate, that's why we put fire departments out there to have a rapid response time to intervene on potentially life-threatening emergencies, but then there was this other large wedge of this low-acuity medical calls, and that's not really what we're looking for in a rapid response, fire-based first response. And again, this isn't unique to the city side, this happens community-wide on what's the utilization of our fire-based responders. So that dark gray wedge was problematic, that was my teams being utilized for medical calls where they weren't likely going to have a positive impact on that. It probably wasn't time-sensitive, it probably wasn't a life-threatening emergency, yet we were taking those units out of service regardless. That was the target. So the groups came together and we had a really impressively large collaboration across city-county lines with fire and EMS, emergency communications, all trying to crack this egg and figure out how we can do it. And the first bit of credit actually goes to Director Foshee from Emergency Communications, who stepped up to increase the intensity and validity of our EMD program. EMD is Emergency Medical Dispatch, which is a structured, organized way of processing an incoming 911 call and separating it into determinants. While this wasn't a new system in the county, it had been going on for some time, it hadn't been utilized to its maximum capabilities, and she stepped up and owned that and got her team really tuned up to where they needed to be, so that we were generating incredibly reliable response determinants that we could count on. When we got information from a call taker about this is what's happening at this emergency, the accuracy is stunning, okay? So the first, first bit of credit goes to Director Foshee and her team, so that's the first thank you. The team came together to build these response profiles around those priorities, or around those determinants, and we were able to find that in looking at the different determinants, we could see these were ones that were truly life-threatening, or really had the potential to be life-threatening, things like not breathing, no pulse, person choking, drownings, these are things that are truly life-threatening and time-sensitive. And then the spectrum goes all the way down to things that are much less so, right? Twisted ankle, right? Sick call, these things that, they still need to be addressed, but they don't necessarily need an emergency, all-call, lights and siren, empty the station type response. And so identifying these across the determinants, we were able to then assign them into these priority levels. Now this was very challenging, not only technically, but also emotionally, because essentially what we were doing is determining what types of calls are we currently sending resources on that we're not going to send resources on moving forward. And that's very challenging, right? It's easy to fall into the trap of just-in-case practice of 911, and it's not fiscally responsible, it's not good stewardship of our resources, but moving away from that is an incredible challenge to say, here's a category that I'm not going to send a fire truck to. That's hard. But this is what we did, and we built it into a series of phases that would allow us to transition into it in a slow and controlled fashion. And the second thank you goes to EMS, and specifically Dave Johnson, who's in the audience, who gave us pages and pages and pages of outcome data from each individual call type and what the outcomes were when we finally got to them and performed a medical assessment. Essentially what we were looking for is, did we have any misses? Did we have cases where we had deemed them to be of low criticality, but when we encountered the person, we were wrong and there actually was something there? Fortunately, we really didn't see that, but it was EMS data that brought that to the table and gave us the confidence that we were doing this without a miss rate and that we were still truly taking care of the public, we were just doing it in a more efficient way. So the second thank you goes to EMS. So the two that affected our fire partners, well, the main one was the priority five. So there, the two categories that result in a single modality response are the priority five and the priority six. So these are the categories from that previous table where we would say, it makes sense to send a fire truck, a first response type, because they may need something and they may need it right now, but the likelihood of them needing transport to a hospital is quite low. We could pull that from the data. And that tells us that responding and responding quickly is valuable, but not necessarily with an apparatus that's designed to carry a person to the hospital. The opposite of that, of course, is the circumstance that has a high probability of being taken to a hospital, but may not have the time criticality, where using that strategically-placed fire resource for a rapid response time doesn't add value, but we do have a reasonable predictability that that person is going to need to go to the hospital. Low value from fire, high value from transport, EMS. So these are the two categories of five and six. So in trying to become more efficient with our utilization of fire resources, once we deemed that it was safe to do so, we threw the switch on saying for priority fives, we are no longer going to dispatch a fire-based resource. Continue to send the ambulance and be able to take that person to the hospital, but keep that fire apparatus in the station, in their area, to be able to respond to the next call, which might truly be a time-sensitive emergency. So you can see exactly when we did that, and it falls off like a rock, okay? This was a very anxiety-provoking time for me, because I needed to make sure once again that we weren't going to be missing people that needed that time-sensitive help. Unfortunately, we weren't, credit again to the data collection. We saw the exact same phenomenon on the county side, we made the change at the same time, and we saw the exact same effect. You'll see that the shorter bright green lines, the priority sixes, are relatively unchanged, those are the ones that are assigned to be a fire-based response. So it truly had the effect that we were looking for. So back to that first graph that was on the dangerous and unsustainable climb, we were able to actually turn the tide. So for those of you, which I think is just about everybody who's in leadership, you know just how challenging it is to change an upward line into a downward line, but this is a true success story where we were able to do that. And you can see that by the end of 2018, the gap between where we had predicted to be at over 61,000 fire-based calls is now down to an actual measured of 47,500 calls, so a dramatic improvement in keeping these units available. So we started out with this wedge, which was disappointing and represented less-than-stellar utilization, and we were able to change it to this, and that's exactly what we were going for. We are still using apparatus for fire-based calls, we are still using first response for time-critical or high-needs medical cases where minutes and seconds count, but we are no longer seeing the waste of low-acuity medical calls consuming the time of our fire apparatus. So the idea here is, we couldn't have pulled this off without the collaboration, and it was more than city and county, it was cross-departments, it was across modalities, and it was across different mindsets. So we had a success, but there's still more work to be done. The trouble with this setup is that while it's extremely effective in calls that I can prioritize into high severity and low severity, it doesn't work for some of the more challenging things that we're up against in the community. You can imagine that some of the things that plague us, like behavioral health or substance abuse, these do not reliably come into the 911 center and get screened as a low-acuity call, right? An abnormal mental status is not going to get classified as a low risk. So these cases where we've got people who need help, but it's not necessarily from a medical scenario, it's from a substance abuse issue or a mental health situation, they're not really going to be helped by this. Yes, this is an improvement in efficiency, but it's not going to get at some of the targets that we need to handle. So this is the next steps and thought process around this. We went out and looked for comparable communities that had similar demographics, size and population to what we have, that had had some success in this area. So we were able to identify partners in both Colorado Springs and the Tulsa metro area, and staff from my office, actually Malachi Winters, who's also in the audience, traveled to these communities and met with the teams that were tackling the same issues and having some success in that. And the third thank you goes to him, because he brought back a potentially very exciting multidisciplinary program. So what these two cities are using is a very similar design strategy, which is a three-person team centered around being able to meet the needs of these people in the field, and when they can't be met in the field, to determine an appropriate destination outside of what we've traditionally been doing. And I think the real beauty in this is that they've identified that almost all of these challenging populations can be met by one or a combination of law enforcement personnel, mental health personnel, and pre-hospital medical personnel. So they've built a three-man team centered around these goals. They have a mental health worker, a social worker, from their equivalent of what we would call com-care, to be the mental health screening component of this. And they've partnered them up with a law enforcement person who can provide scene safety to the team, and also a legal authority on actions that need to be taken, and then finished off the team with a third member of a medical provider in the form of a community paramedic from their ALS fire system. And those three people come together as a team model to assess the situation and figure out what the best outcome for that person is. This is hard to read, but I include it for the notes, this is a description of what each of those people did that I just covered. So there's a degree of complexity to it, because they're trying to figure out exactly what these people need, but it's directed at getting them to an appropriate destination. So taking these people simply to an emergency department may not meet their needs, taking them to jail almost certainly doesn't meet their needs, right? But we haven't built our systems around being able to get them directly to the places that they need, whether it's a detox center, or whether it's a mental health facility, or maybe it is an emergency department, or maybe it is the jail, but to start having a cognizant thought process around what's the right place to take this person, as opposed to what's the usual place that we take these people. The outcomes are where the real money is. So in the Colorado Springs system, they were able to encounter over 3,000 people and treat approximately half of those where they were. But interestingly enough, they were able to do so without the use of the involuntary mental, mental health hold. So in Colorado, the terms for these are the M1 hold and the EC holds, but what I'd like to direct your attention to is that it's less than 200 of these cases combined required them to go that route. So this is not a team about sending out a group to lock people up or put them on involuntary holds. Yes, they have to do that in some circumstances, but it's not the primary outcome. And in fact, the primary outcome is that large wedge, which is treat in place. They were able to identify what these people's needs were and meet them right there where they were encountered, whether that was resources, whether that was referral to appropriate center, whether that was provision of medication to calm and resolve the situation, they were able to fix the problem right where they were. Not 100% of the time, all of the other wedges represent the other places that people had to go, but the biggest one was deal with the problem right where you are. That's pretty cool. From an impact on the system, the idea here is that if we send out a team like this, that it will free up our other more traditional resources. We'll see fire department units released, we'll see medical units released, but what they both found, what they found in both cities, was that there is a dramatic increase in the number of law enforcement units that they were able to release back to the community to provide coverage. This is particularly intriguing to me, as we've had troubles with maintaining appropriate law enforcement staffing, that if we could see a bar graph like this with thousands of units of law enforcement time being re-released to the community, that would be an incredible victory for a strategy like this. So moving forward, the collaborative team is going to be far more complicated. The first one was a challenge, and we only had five or six members, but this one's going to have to span not only city and county, fire and EMS, we're going to need our law enforcement partners, we're going to need to engage with the healthcare networks. So this one's going to be a real challenge, but I think it's worth pursuing, and this is something that the team is coming together. So purposes for coming to you today, one is to celebrate the victory that we've had through the EMD process and the collaborative measures to free up a lot of our fire-based resources and make them more available to the community, and number two, to give you guys some insight as to strategies that we're looking into moving down the line to potentially tackle some of our most challenging problems. So thank you for having me, always an honor to see you guys, if there's any questions, I'd enjoy talking about it. Thank you.
When are you briefing this to the city of Wichita?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, okay, and how did they take it?
Very well.
Very, very. So what is, was there any decision made, or are they going to look at this model?
Yes, yeah, certainly no binding decision, but very exciting about this, showed them the same graphs and data. I think really only the decision at this point is, this is something that we need to look into, as it could really be valuable to us.
Okay, so what are the next steps then, between Wichita and city?
So the first thing that we're doing, again, is we're going, we're going back to emergency communications, it seems like everything starts in Alora's data, and looking at, where the, what's the impact potential here? What times of day, what types of call determinants? If we were to do a pilot program, which honestly is our goal, when would we staff that? When would we put it out? How much volume would we need to be able to manage? And we have to do the data analysis on that first. My suspicion is that we'll have plenty of work to do.
Very good. Well, again, I remember this week, I think, is emergency telecommunications, if I get the terminology right, we want to wish each and every one of your folks over at the 911 call center well, and thank them very much for what they do for us every day. 911 is an area that the public just knows it's there, and they'd be lost without it, and your folks are reacting on probably the most difficult day of some person's life, so we appreciate that. Anyway, back to what Dr. Gallagher was talking about, Commissioner Meister, do you have questions?
Thank you. Dr. Gallagher, I was able to be a part of this first gathering we did a few years ago when you first, and I was the city's representative, one of the city representatives from the city council, and I can tell you, it was daunting data that we were looking at originally, as you guys can see on that first slide, it was bad. And I got to credit Alora, I don't know, the first two or three meetings, and she came up, she was really thinking, how can we as 911 help triage the calls? I've got staff, I've got data, and I didn't know you at the time, but I was very impressed that you had an open mind and you were throwing out ideas, that the committee is about twice this table, right? A lot of, a lot of members. And, but anyway, you kind of helped get the ball rolling with Dr. Gallagher and this data, and we're making great progress, as explained, and I personally am a fan of, now we're taking it to the next step, which you saw with Colorado Springs and Tulsa, Tulsa's looking what Colorado Springs did, Colorado Springs does it, I can't remember, five days a week?
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week.
And then on Friday, Saturday, Sun, I'm sorry, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, they extra staff, because they've found that that's a particularly high-volume time for them.
With these teams, and they have peak hours, right? They don't do it 24 hours, it's peak, and then Tulsa's doing an experiment with two or three days a week. And our EMS and our fire, and everybody comes together and saying, well, I might have a staff member that maybe we can volunteer and see what's going to happen, and so I'm a very supportive of us going forward with trying to do this teamwork out there as well. I'm, we're not making the decision here, but I'm so glad that you're sharing this, this is newsworthy news of the improvements that we've made, and no longer are we dispatching, you know, three vehicles, red light and siren for a, basically might be a Band-Aid or a sprained ankle, so, and obviously the mental health issues that we have in this community, this seems to be such a great answer, if I'm hearing from what we've been saying, is hearing in these meetings.
Certainly seems to have great potential, and we'll continue collecting that information and keep you guys up to date. This is just very exciting first steps, so I wanted you to be aware of it.
And it's cooperation with the city and the city police, and everybody, all those logos seem to be on the same page, and so it's really good. I know that Commissioner Cruz, this is dear to her as well, and maybe next time we have a meeting, I'll invite her to join us to watch and hear.
By all means.
Hear the strength of what's in that, in that meeting, so. I thank you, the fire and EMS and everybody for having open minds on this, and we were not stuck in our, and you recognized Alora earlier, and I want to personally thank you again, and you came up the last meeting with another idea, and so it's really good, good stuff, my compliments.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions? Dr. Gallagher. Say none, thank you very much, I appreciate you being here.
Thank you, always a pleasure.
Thank you, Dr.
We're only, we're only mad because you snuck up that city meeting on us, I thought that was next week that you were going to the city, was it scheduled next week?
There's another one in open forum.
I got you.
Yeah, it wasn't a workshop, was it?
The workshop is the one I think that you're thinking of.
Right, right, and Councilmember Brian Fry has been on this committee from the start as well, so, and...
Correct, and the meeting yesterday was with him and the city police chief.
Oh, good.
Obviously, there's a large component of law enforcement here.
And chief is still on board, thumbs up?
Seems to be.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a very different model, that isn't what they've been thinking of, but it's, when you look at the numbers, it's hard to deny.
Very true, very true, it's good stuff.
That's all we had, I want to spend just a second talking about schedule of meetings. We had tentatively said no meeting, next week is the last Wednesday of the month, we generally do not have a meeting, but we know we will not have a meeting on May 1st, so the question was, do you want to shoehorn in a meeting for July 24th, I'm sorry, April 24th? And does anybody have anything that would have to go to the commission? That's time-sensitive. Commission have a will on?
Tom asked me this question this morning, and I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have something that we had to make a decision on, because we're going to not, we're going to go two weeks without a meeting, so is there any pressing business that we have to take care of? If not, then we'll skip two weeks.
Okay, and then, I don't need an answer today on this, but I just want to put on your, in your mind, July 3rd is a Wednesday, of course, the holiday is the 4th, Thursday, so I'll ask you again next week what you think on that particular meeting, and I don't know if we have any budget-sensitive issues happening, and so we'll think about what we'll do on July 3rd as well, which would again put us in a two-week lapse without a meeting, so, don't need an answer on that today.
Commissioner Meister?
Is finance, considering on our budget world, what we just heard here, we may end up having a person or two in a...
It has not necessarily been a factor on the forecast, so that would be something that is not highly appropriate for a public, maybe, and it would come with, but I mean, it sounds like there's still some data now.
Yeah, there is.
We don't necessarily know what you're doing.
My thought, though, is if, if we start out in the combined volunteer world of ours or days, but eventually, if it's as successful as what we're thinking, it would still be probably a, this fiscal year event, wouldn't it? If we wanted to permanently staff or permanently staff a few days?
I would love to get to that point, I think we will get to that point, and we'll need your support on it, but to Lindsay's point, at this point, we really aren't certain what that would be. I think looking towards appropriately staffing a reasonable pilot program to measure what the need would be, would be a start. For ballparking, when we look at the Colorado Springs model, they have at their peak times three full teams on, so that's nine personnel operating. No one would suggest that we would start there, but that may be the endpoint where we end up, but focus on a quality pilot program to measure it, absolutely.
Colorado Springs has been doing this for three years, is that right? Two years?
Four to five.
Four to five.
We're on our fifth year now.
So they're much more along than we would be. So they're much more along than we would be. Anyway, I just suggest that.
Are you good? Hey, anything else, Tom?
Commissioner, good morning.
I have a quick one, is that I'm chewing gum, because Tiger Woods chews gum and allows him to concentrate more.
That's why I'm chewing gum.
That's why I chew gum.
There's a gum chew.
I guess my main concern this morning is that I keep seeing in the news where that a young child is murdered by people that ought to be caring for. And it's gotten to the point where I don't know what the solution is. We've got a child advocacy center, we've got an exploited missing child unit, we've got some organizations out there, but it keeps coming up in the news, and it's tragic. It's worse than tragic, that the people that should be caring for these people are killing them. So I think that someone, we're going to have to get involved in it somehow, and I don't know what the solution is. But I am in favor of whatever the Sedgwick County can come up with, with all the expertise that we've got in this room and across our 3,000 members. What do we need to do to turn this around? This is not acceptable in our society, and it's a tragedy. So I don't know if I've got support of the other commissioners, but I think that we need to figure out, if no one else is going to take the lead on this, Sedgwick County needs to take the lead and figure out what we can do to turn this around.
I would have to absolutely agree, and I would have to say that it stems from substance abuse. It stems from parents not getting the resources that they need. I think that it's a mental health, substance abuse, behavioral health issue. I think that when it comes to parents not getting the resources they need and not understanding how to take care of children and the stress that children bring upon us all, I mean, who's not wanted to wring a child's neck every once in a while? I mean, I'll just be frank with you, I mean, kids are stressful, and we cope with things in the ways of drinking and drugs and those kinds of things. And so I don't want to be, I mean, I'm on my soapbox every day about substance abuse and mental health, but I think that that's the issue. I think if we can really boil it down to something, I'm just a huge advocate for figuring out ways to tackle that problem. I'm not saying that that's going to solve anything, but I think that that's a huge component to what's happening.
I don't see any commissioners that don't think that we need to, especially with us taking lead on mental health, behavioral health in Sedgwick County, that I think this is an issue that Sedgwick County needs to start working a little harder than we're doing now. And I don't know what that is. I don't know how you work harder on this to solve it, but we've got to come up with something. We cannot have this in the newspaper continuously.
We have to treat it like the crisis that it is. I mean, we have to start really talking about it as it's an epidemic, because it really is. And, you know, just over the past couple of weeks, you know, I've been trying to figure Why are we here? That's the question I would have posed to all of us as public servants. And I hate to get emotional, but damn it, I am. So that's what we have to do. We have to really start treating it like it's a crisis and think about that during our budget cycle. What are we going to fund? What are we going to use our public dollars to fund? How are we going to help people who need help? That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
I'll just add in that, and you throw the issue of suicide on top of this too, where we've had a lot of poor cases in the last couple of weeks, of young people committing suicide. So when you have crisis, you attack it two ways. You attack it short-term, what can we do right now to stem the tide? And that could involve some dollars, or it could just involve some staffing issues and some recalibration. But then the other component is, we have to determine what we're going to do long-term. And these kinds of significant societal issues don't get solved in one budget cycle. We have to continue to pound on them every year and make this the theme of this commission and this body. So we will, Chairman, we'll come up with a strategic plan, will contain short-term and long-term solutions that we can look at. And I do agree with Commissioner that we're getting into a budget season right now, and it's an optimal time to talk about some of these things.
So I agree. We need to involve all of our partners, and we'd get Wichita involved, then Police Department, our Sheriff's Department. DCF is critical to this, and I don't know what DCF is doing. I don't know where we're going to go in that realm. I'm disappointed, I hear time and time again that DCF was involved in this, and still we still lose a child. So we need to get our legislators and our governor involved in this solution. It's critical at this point. Okay. Hey, well, let's go on to other issues then. Does any commissioners have anything they'd like to bring up this morning? Anyone around the staff table? Any of our electors this morning? Tabitha?
Not elected, but it's going to jump up, right? On a much lighter note, I just wanted to officially announce that the governor did a science center that was running against the law yesterday. She did a section read this morning, and I specifically wanted to read a section of that to you. It says this law is about local control and protecting every vote. Governor Kelly's been. I applaud all the local and state officials who work together to make this law a reality, especially those in Sedgwick County who are the driving force behind it.
Very good. Thank you, Tabitha. And I want to thank the legislature for listening and doing this, and the governor for signing that. And if you can get a copy of that bill, I think it ought to be hanging over in your office.
I would love that. And I've heard rumors that there's a strong possibility that we're going to get a local claim in Wichita of this, after the new section.
Very good. Thank you. Now, any other electors have anything this morning? Sheriff, anything?
Morning, sir. Thank you.
Very good. Any other staff in the room have anything this morning? Okay, well, I know that we continue to watch the windmill issue over in Reno County. I get emails on it every day. The commission, the planning commission has not made a decision yet on what they're going to do over there at this point in time. I read in the newspaper on Saturday, the Hutchinson newspaper, I've been trying to keep up with what's going on through that. And it says that their planning commission is going to still have another meeting or so, and that one of the meetings they plan on going into executive session on. I served on the MAPC for nine years, and we never had an executive session on the planning commission in Sedgwick County. So I don't know exactly what you do in an executive session on windmills, but that kind of strikes me as odd. But that's their county and not ours. We will keep that moving forward, but I know we're on track to come up with some decisions to come before the county commission in the future. But we need to keep track of exactly what Reno County is doing, because it is going to impact us. I've been asking over and over again for Nexera to give us the route of the transmission lines, and I have not received that yet, but they promised it to me sometime in the month of May. So I hope that we can see that in the near future, too. That's the biggest thing. I thought I'd bring everybody up to speed on the latest that I know on windmills. We did have a meeting last week with folks that came in to talk to us about solar energy. And we've met with some of our legal folks and individual companies that are interested in putting a solar project up north of the plant in Colwich. They're bigger than I thought. He was talking about three sections of land, a section of 640 acres times three. So that's a pretty large complex that they're talking about. But we need to do a little bit more research. They do have a couple of facilities that are operating in other states right now, so we've got our legal that's going to contact some of those other counties that they're in to see what's happening in those counties. And we probably need planning to be involved in that also, is we find out how this solar energy is working in other counties. They're rather interesting, in fact, that they are long lines of these solar panels that are going in lines from north to south. And then during the day, they rotate with the sun, so that they're facing the sun all the time. They do have someone on site 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year to monitor them, to clean the snow off of them in the wintertime, and to fix anything that goes wrong during the day. It looks like that they're interested in the location that they talked about, because it's close to the Gordon Evans plant, and they don't have to run a long transmission line across Sedgwick County to be able to hook this thing in. But we did learn quite a bit about solar that I didn't know about before we had that meeting. So that looks like it's a strong possibility, because he's already looking at the location and large sections of land in Sedgwick County. So I thought I'd bring up, everybody up to speed on that discussion. Anyway, I don't have anything else this morning. You have anything else, Mr. Manager? Sounds good. Let's go to work. Appreciate it. Thanks for everybody's time.